I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have some more reflection, please? Okay. You want to get started?
Yeah.
Do your roll call, do your roll call.
Chris San.
Here.
Shipman.
Here.
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 Henry.
Here.
Want to start with, we had testing for our new court hall. There was four officers attached and our new court hall is going to be Travis Bremmigen. Officer Bremmigen, would you come forward? Eric. Eric, write and repeat after me.
I, Travis Bremmigen.
I, Travis Bremmigen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
That I will discharge the duties.
That I will discharge the duty.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
We're going to do this for a long time. Roll call, draw a little blood, yeah.
Okay, I need a motion to accept the minutes and reports of the Fire Department, Police Department, Treasurer, Code Office, Public Works, Redevelopment Authority, and Plating Commission. Need a second?
A second.
Yes.
Right here.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Yes. Is there any audience comment at this time or any agenda items? Okay, John, Financial Management Plan, CDBG.
Actually, we have a, I don't know, are you going to take that or not?
Well, I'm sure talk about bidding out Chestnut Street. I'm not sure what the financial management plan is.
You can do that. We have an update for Financial Management Plan. This has been in progress, working with DCEV and the people of CDCOG. And we have made some changes to the procedures. They have that before you and I make a motion that we adopt these new Financial Management Plans.
This is mostly things that were mandated by the government.
Exactly.
Is this the, do you have the one that is the corrective action? Corrective action plan revision one?
Yeah. So this is just, this is just a document that implements that.
All right, well, October 9th, Bill sent out a second letter with a revision to the original. So I'm wondering if you have the revision of the original or? Did send that out. No. Okay, it says, the top says it gives a very corrective action plan revision one.
That's what we officially adopt.
Financial management plan, okay.
Even if we don't, that's what we're officially adopting.
As long as you have the slide one.
We'll make sure we have the right one.
Okay. I know what you're talking about now, sorry.
Second.
Right here.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Chris San.
Yes.
Shipman.
Yes.
And then also wonder that I have Lee here this evening to talk about the final plans for the Chestnut Street project.
Lee, where is yours?
Well, we're here to let ask council, you're letting me do the advertising for the Phase One part of the project for the construction of Chestnut. Phase One will go from Front Street to Nerd Street and then the River Crossing. It'll also include a section of South River Street as well as a section of Reservoir next to the high rise. That's for the purpose of the separation of Stormwater Sewer Project that we're going to discuss project. The project, of course, includes the separation project as it was talked about, as well as new sewer lines, still all the residents and businesses of all Chestnuts in that section. There'll also be water tanks being installed, Back River and Long Raspberry, as to create a loop for the authority. There's also, of course, new sidewalk curbs, removable street trees, tree lighting package as far as at least putting in the foundations and the conduit. And also the secondary traffic signal. We're replacing that as well in our very own facility. So, at this point, all the documents are pretty much complete. We have all the permits in hand and at this point, the authorities are doing the Stormwater and Sewer project. And soon we get the unit effects and the buses and everything, that re-announced, so that's finished, we'll be ready for bidding. So that's where it's at.
I'm hoping we can have the approval back so we can advertise the week of October 23rd and then again early the following week, so you advertise twice. So that we can then open the bid with the council meeting on the 10th of November, review them and then award at the other council meeting on November 24th.
You need a motion, yeah?
We need a motion to approve advertising for bid pending unit tax review of the sewer and water.
Okay, you want all approvals done, so will we have them back by the 23rd, you're saying?
From October.
From October.
I want to, I want you to have the advertising in the paper by the, by October 23-ish.
So right now, the name's holding this up as municipal party.
Just getting their final approval.
Okay, as soon as we get your final approval, you advertise as such?
As long as you're good with that.
Okay. And then we'll open business November 10th.
We can open them right here at council if you wish and then award at the next meeting after we review everything.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
You have a second now?
Henry.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Chris San.
Yes.
Shipman.
Yes.
Right here.
Yes.
They want to make one comment. This will be the first time in the city of Sunbury that I'm aware of, we did a total restoration from the sewer, water, stormwater, and also, of course, sidewalk curbing and paving and so forth and lighting package. So, something, it's going to be expensive, but should be, that section of the city of Sunbury shouldn't have to be touched for years and years.
So hopefully we can get started in December, mid-December, and then finish by mid-September of next year, so paving can be done. That's when it has to be done by the end of, so I think we're going to have a good schedule to start all the utility work over the winter and then the street work finalize in the summer.
Anything else?
That's all.
Thank you very much. SRI update, Slade, make a lucid slide, Eric.
Okay, you all received the committee reports for September, I'm just going to touch on a few, I'm not going to read them all. We've sold over 250 promotional cards with discounts to eleven city businesses, which is pretty good, we weren't expecting to sell that maybe the first year, but it's going real well. The whole neighborhood's still doing work on the hospital house that we have and Old Town's still working on projects they have. We're, they invoice memberships for 2015 and developing a member-to-member benefit program to promote inter-member Sunbury support. Light Fest is going to start decorating 11, November 17th, we're looking for volunteers. Roof front planning, we had over 900 people at the Wine Brew Fest and we raised approximately $18,000. We're looking at other possibilities for 2015 season. Our next thing is the New Year's Eve celebration. We have four acts lined up for New Year's Eve as the, at the main stage, which is Heart, Poison, Guns N' Roses, and Monty Crue. And then we also have the kids portion, which has a theme this year of Frozen. Why are you laughing?
I'm sorry.
Well, a tribute page, yeah. Well, that's, that's an obvious. And Stump Grinding is, has been successful, they had a few this half, they brought a couple of drill bits. Flower baskets coming down in the next few weeks and I will say, along with John, very successful season on the flower basket.
Good job.
And then as far as the Albright Council, the lease with H2 is being reviewed and the first year is complete. We're finishing up the roof project and plating of the building and we're getting ready to go after year two sponsors. I believe that's everything.
Can I ask you, are the flower baskets, do we have enough now, since we bought the new ones that are work or there's something you need?
I believe we do have enough, right, John?
Yes.
Yeah, we have enough and hopefully next year, we're fingers crossed, we're going to do the same exact thing as we did this year.
Nation worked for years and they are.
Yeah, yeah, they have, what is that, John, a gallon reservoir in it and that's.
Good. Questions? Thank you, Slade.
You're welcome.
Uh, redevelopment authority update. You can do the resolution, yeah, do the resolution first.
Okay, I have a resolution to put before the council. What this is, we had public auctions for the sale of three properties and this resolution is to ratify and affirm the actions of the City of Sunbury Redevelopment Authority in having those auctions. Those properties are 152 Bainbridge Street, 613 Catalyst Avenue, 239 First Street. And the three properties are going to be sold via real estate transactions within the next couple of weeks here. So this resolution also asks that the funds from those sales will be put into the City of Sunbury Redevelopment Authority bank account for use on future listed property projects. The auctions for those three properties were held in August and just recently, October 7th.
This is the same thing we did the last time, we have to say, oh, it'll be the same thing we do in the future sales. Any a motion accept? Second?
A second.
Ister.
Yes.
Chris San.
Yes.
Shipman.
Yes.
Right here.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
All right, just for the update, the following real estate closings are pending. It's 245 Chestnut, 325, 327 Market. 152 Bainbridge was on the sheet through 6, the 314 South Third, 613 Catalyst Avenue, 239 Spruce. So just three of those are already on the sheet and we just passed. October 21st, which is Tuesday, Tuesday, is our next auction, that will be at 5:45, will be at 4:34 Reagan Street. At 6 o'clock will be at 414, 416 North Second Street. At 6:15 will be at 144 South Street and at 6:30 will be at 608 South Front Street. Now, there's no buildings anywhere. Okay, all four of those are empty lots, there's no buildings in this, in this auction on the 21st, these are all vacant properties, vacant lots. The following properties are currently in eminent domain, moving up the ladder, which is 113 Chestnut, 116 South Fourth, 216, 218 Spruce, 822 South River Avenue, 964 South Front Street, 218 North Front Street. Again, we bring you up to date, so if there's a house in your neighborhood, there's a property in your neighborhood that you don't seem to have on our list, and this is, again, this is just the priorities and as it moves up, we have other properties that we're moving up. We like to report everything, keep everything, so you know what's coming up. We probably had, I bet, I bet that Catalyst, I bet there was 20 people up there, not that 20 people bid, but at least 20 people showed up for interest in the properties. And that's what we're trying to do, we tell everybody, even if you don't visit, get your name on an email, we'll contact you 10 days or seven days or whatever you officially do, let you know. Figure that the more people we get, the more opportunity we have to get a higher bid on the property, so that went rather well last week. So like I say, they're all vacant lots that are scheduled for Tuesday, 21st. Questions? Okay. How about, want to go road closure, Dale, New Year's Eve?
Yeah, New Year's Eve, of course, as Slade said, I would like to do Market Street. And then also on road closure, Memorial Drive, we're going to do a soft walk tournament for the benefit of the Sunbury Celebration. That is, that is October.
I think it's the 1st, 6th, and 7th.
Yeah. So I'd like to mention, let me go ahead.
Do your second.
Second.
Chris San.
Yes.
Shipman.
Yes.
Right here.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Ister.
We already have approval advertised, we already did that. Rick, Harv approval?
Yeah, this, not 14 Harv, but the last Harv meeting and just for now to here, I'll let Mike read over what's been done. And the gentleman, Sarah, believes that owns the property, or Sunbury property, that is looking to get done, and he has a lot invested in the community, so I'd like to get this on the stick, this book, you can. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Riker was saying, on October 1st, we had two projects coming for the Harv Committee. First one being 360 Arch Street owned by Dino and Maria Pugolius, who are in attendance this evening. Unfortunately, their front porch was damaged by a motor vehicle accident, was located at Fourth and Arch Street. They're replacing the porch back to the original, being a three-quarter ton groove decking along with the one by Trim and the original posts that were there that were not damaged. However, during the meeting, Mr. Pugolius did request that they could have approval to put railing around the porch if they chose to do so. And the Harv Board did give them approval for putting railing around as long as it was wood or wrought iron to match the other porches in the area in the neighborhood there. And they're asking for your approval for the C-B. The second one is 512 Market Street, owned by Dr. Mohammed and Ruben Nazar. They're looking to do a roof repair. Currently, they have a section of the roof that is leaking, that is currently shingles. They want to replace that with a 29 gauge tin with the same color of the shingles, which is a gray. The only area that can be seen from that roof is if you stand at the corner of Fifth and Market at the church and look up, that's the area you can see where they're requesting a roof repair.
I'll make that motion. And you will at the same time? Yeah, might as well.
Shipman.
Yes.
Right here.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Chris San.
Yes. Park Recreational, Park Time Seasonal Health, Jim?
Yeah, I got the gentleman calling, Board of Mark Benjamin, could be working temporary for the winter months for the rink. Early rate of $8.50, work approximately 16 hours a week, two shifts. They're taking motion that they can hire this young guy.
I'll make that motion. Money's in your budget?
Yes, it is, sir.
Do your first and second, right?
General.
Right here.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Ister. Chris San.
Yes.
Shipman.
Yes.
Approval pay invoices, John?
All right, we have a general fund invoices in the amount of $106,740.73. Make a motion that we approve those for payment. And for the liquid fuels fund, $5,422.86, make a motion that we approve those.
Henry. Ister. Chris San.
Yes.
Shipman.
Yes.
Right here.
Yes.
Taxe generation, John?
Okay, we have eight or nine folks that have, that comply. Most of them are duplicate, we have one person who is no longer a resident and one person who is deceased. These are the small personal taxes. Make a motion that we honorate these people from their tax.
Do your second?
Ister.
Yes.
Chris San.
Yes.
Shipman.
Yes.
Right here.
Yes. Yes.
Audience comment, any contender?
Yes.
Does ma'am?
Mayor.
Yes.
Regina Russell, Community Activist. And, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. It's been about 2.5 years that I've been attending the council meetings and I want to thank Councilman Ister because he initially called me at home, introducing himself and attempting to intimidate me and silence me from calling the Code Office about any complaints that I had. At that time, the Code Office had reported to him 15 complaints on his property at 406 Walnut Street. The last two weeks, I called the Code Office and the Police Department regarding what appeared as an abandoned commercial vehicle parked in front of the garage at this property. I don't know the weight of the vehicle, but it usually has four tires in the back. At this time, and it was a commercial vehicle because the gentleman does work for the Code Office. The back wheels were on the driver's side flat. On the right backside of the vehicle, it was sitting on a cinder block for about a week. The rotor was sitting on the cinder block. When I started calling, the following week, instead of a cinder block, it had a tire jack under the right rear side of the truck. Last Tuesday, my neighbor called me outside and wanted me to walk around the neighborhood with her. While I was out, I wanted to take pictures again to show the change from it being on a cinder block going to it being on a jack. I was taking pictures and she said to me, somebody's taking pictures of you taking pictures. So I turned around because I wanted to pose for that picture and lo and behold, it was Councilman Ister. And he was out yelling, "That's your community activist!" And he said it like it was a dirty word. So she said, when I told her that was her councilman, she said, "Which one?" She had to ask me twice and I said, "That's Councilman Ister, he owns this property." Well, she hauled over to him and I was very proud to see that she did not bow down and she gave him an earful, the earful that I hear from the residents in my community who are afraid to come and speak up because of the retaliation that has been known from certain council members. While she was talking and giving him an earful, and did she give you an earful, Mr. Councilman Ister? Oh, you weren't listening, huh? Because it looked like he was running as fast as he could to get away from her, but she held on to him for a while. And I wanted to see who was driving the vehicle behind attentive windows and it was Councilmember Reitner. So I said, "Ooh, let me take a picture." And I took the picture, he opened the door and he said, "You idiot! You are an idiot! That is not illegal." So how can a vehicle on an open way where pedestrians pass by for two weeks sit there and not be illegal? I asked that, and this is only a small example of what I've been trying to say to the council, to Councilmember Ister, as well as Reitner, that we need to clear this up. You are councilmen and Mr. Mayor certainly, I said again before, that you are the leader of all these people sitting on the side of you. Your success is whatever they produce for you and these two are out of order. I have to say that especially for Councilman Reitner, his behavior has been improper ever since he's been in office. You've called me pretty much of a liar by saying I was filing and falsifying complaints and then when I asked to see whatever evidence you had, you had none, you threw it all away. At least that's what you reported that you did. So you've accused me of publicly filing false reports, threatening to remove my handicap space, all right? And to me, sir, you are clearly not fit to be a trusted, be in the trusted position that you are representing the residents of Sunbury. And I am calling for you to resign from your seat as council member and director of public, of public safety.
Woo! Can I ask you a question? Woo!
I would like to get an answer from the council.
No, I'm not going to resign.
Thank you. Now, yes, Mr. Mayor?
Do you know if this vehicle without the tire is registered in license?
Tires, it was more than one, sir.
Is it registered in license?
It does work, yes, it does work for the city.
Inspection, okay. And it was on private property?
You know what, you keep saying it's on private property and there are several ordinances that deal with that. And for two, I told you I was coming here 2.5 years complaining, for a year and a half, no one ever mentioned private property. It wasn't until Councilmember Tru got into office that that word, private property, kept coming up. And I think I've heard in these meetings many times that you were trying to go around the city, clean the properties up, the backyards, any vehicles sitting around looking like they were abandoned, I still see quite a few of them. So how's that job going, Councilman Reitner?
That's not my job.
You were the one that said you all were going to do that.
Police department took over 54th and Beatty Law.
Thank you, sir. So you're not resigning?
No, ma'am.
Well, I'm going to tell you, when you go around calling people idiots, make sure that it's not something you don't call your own mother. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, just to address her concern about the truck, the truck, is the truck still there?
No, and you know it's not.
Correct, because it was, the problem was dealt with in.
Two days after they performed in front of my neighbor, they had a witness.
It wasn't because of that, it's because I received a complaint and talked to Mr. Shoal and he told me what the problem was. He couldn't, he could not get a tire for that vehicle, that's what he was waiting for and once he got that in, he got it removed.
Sir, that all sounds wonderful and I really appreciate what you're saying and you said one tire, I'm saying there's four tires.
Right.
So he could not get any, he could not get four tires for his rear vehicle.
There's special, there's special tires, he had to wait, get the ticket to the route line, I believe, and have them retrofit them so they would fit into an older truck, but it has since been removed.
Chief, I don't want to disrespect you and I'm not disrespecting you, but we know that I've been coming here for a long time. We know that your job, you have to do what they tell you to do. It's not, it has nothing to do whatever kind of integrity you have, what is right or wrong, you have to do what the council does and they're all your bosses.
No, I answered to the mayor, Ms. Russell.
Yes.
That's it. I received your complaint and I took care of it.
You received my complaint?
Yes.
Thanks, sir, because I called the police last week and the police didn't even issue a ticket.
There's no ticket, they did.
That's why I asked you, but it was licensed and current registration, that's what abandoned vehicle, that's what the police department was taking care of.
Well, I was describing to you that it looked like an abandoned vehicle, so if it looks like an abandoned vehicle, it's sitting in a public way, they should have been ticketed.
It wasn't in a public way.
You just said you can't take it if it's licensed and registered.
And I can't, I can't argue with people who are under the thumb of the mayor and the city council. All I can do is bring it to the attention of the public, hope that they make a difference at the voting polls.
Thank you for your concern.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have another great idea for the city of Sunbury this year. I need some help. My great idea is, does anybody ever go up to Woonfer, they have all those Christmas trees that they put up there and they have businesses sponsor the Christmas trees and then they have groups, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, they decorate the trees.
On the Main Street? I believe so.
No, no, they don't have it on the Main Street, they have it in a building up there.
It's in the, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's in history.
Well, I've been to the Masonic Temple, they're willing to let us borrow the bottom floor of the temple. So now I need some help, that somebody that really, really, really loves Christmas and would like to help and do this. Because I think it would be a great thing to do, to sponsor, get businesses to sponsor the trees and go out and get these organizations to decorate them. Have the Masonic Temple open on a couple of Saturdays before Christmas and then, or a couple of weeks, and then when, right before Christmas, to donate the trees with the decorations to families that either cannot afford to buy a tree or need a tree. So, that's my idea.
Do you have a name for it, Mo? Your festival?
Yeah.
Didn't we do something on the second floor of the Zion Temple a couple of years ago? They either not, not do that number, they're, they're, they're breakfast rooms. Are these our official trees?
No, Justin Nobleburger, Justin, Justin Nobleburger has an in on getting me the trees and he can get me as many as I need for a really good price and then we'll have a business sponsor it and make a little bit of money there, we'll donate some money to the minute we start, we're using all the trees and the lights and that kind of stuff.
I think Sales Group does something like that, they ask the schools, certain classes to decorate the tree.
Are we looking for like a time, after Thanksgiving, before Thanksgiving or what?
Um, I'd like to, like to try and do it right after Thanksgiving, to have it in that timeframe, because they, they've got to find out when their meeting is in November, when they can let us into the building. But I'd like, I need someone to help me or people to help me kind of organize all this stuff, because I'm only one person, I, yeah. Can't do it and I'd like to see this done, you know what I mean, I think it's a good thing and then the tree. Can't do it, and I'd like to see this done, you know what I mean, I think it's a good thing, and then the trees and everything can be given to people, families that can't get a tree. So, so if you know anybody.
Should we at least contact the, the, or like all the businesses through, through SRI maybe?
Yeah, and that's what we're kinda working on.
Yeah, she, she already approached SRI, and, uh, you know, we'll help as much as possible.
But, yeah.
Our volunteer is like, but, uh, yeah, I mean, we've already discussed it in our meeting, uh, but we're willing to help her as much as possible.
All right, and that's what I need, I could use a couple people from the community, some retired people, or, you know, people that don't work or something, you know, that really would like to get into this, so if anybody knows anybody. I think every help I can get, somebody, but that's my idea this year, so.
Well, God forbid. Thank you very much.
What? What'd you say?
I didn't say a word.
Oh, you did.
That sounded like you're volunteering.
Uh, oh, I'm volunteering anyway, so it doesn't matter, but, yeah.
Anybody, audience comments, yes, sir?
Yes, October thirty-first, uh, River of Light is sponsoring Light Tonight and Cameron Park. Hot dogs, base painting, popcorn, coffee, hot chocolate, oh, candy, so I just want to publicly invite everyone to come. We usually end up with about a thousand people, it'd be nice to make it fifteen-hundred this year.
That's Friday night, right?
That's, ooh, October thirty-first, yeah.
That's Friday night, yeah. What time is it?
That's trick-or-treat, whatever it is. Yep, trick-or-treat, the whole day, yep.
Wow, you got a football game that night and Halloween. What, what time is it?
Uh, we usually start at six, and we, we go till the crowd grills.
Great thing, all right. Cameron Park, October thirty-first, who'd you say, six?
Six, six o'clock. Light Tonight.
Anybody else, audience? Uh, twenty-fifteen budgets, budget worksheet, John?
Okay, uh, I passed, uh, a budget worksheet out to everyone. Uh, please note that you have last two full fiscal years, and this fiscal year through October the eighth, uh, has a guide for, uh, your, uh, request for two thousand fifteen budget, and a column to put your two thousand fifteen budget requests in. Uh, we will have our first, uh, budget workshops next week, um, and, uh, we'll work on those. Uh, if you have any questions, call me, and, uh, we'd like to get the budget process going quickly, and, uh, we have some challenges this year, so, uh, we want to make this as accurate as possible, so that we know what we're doing.
Questions? Hey, Schwerer Avenue, Dale?
Yes, uh, Mike Gordon, my son, working this on a couple months. We had originally got some price quotes to do Schwerer Avenue, and, uh, the gas company will be in the week of October twentieth, as you'll see down here in the last part of the meeting. And what we were able to do is go back and get proposals again, and Midstate Paving came in at eighteen thousand five hundred thirty-one and twenty-four cents. Eastern Industries came in at twenty-one thousand one dollar and seventy-five cents. Meckley's came in at fourteen thousand one hundred and twelve dollars even to do Schwerer Avenue. So, since it's liquid fuels, we contacted Barry Garber from PennDOT, which he approved it. Make a long story short, we're gonna do Schwerer Avenue the week of August twentieth. Or October, yeah, not on.